All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this Lake Mills City Council Meeting of June 21, 2022. Can the Secretary please do rule call?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
All right. Thank you. Would everybody please rise and join us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is correction and/or approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of June 7, 2022, and work session meeting minutes of June 16, 2022. Any discussion on that? Can we get a move to approve there?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the June 7, 2022 City Council and the City Council work session meeting minutes from June 16. I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. And seeing no discussion, we'll go with a quick hand raise. Are all those in favor? And I can't see Steve. Looks like he's got his up. Five-oh on that. We'll move forward. Correspondence. Ms. Quidnow?
Sure. So, there was quite a bit of correspondence with regard to a topic that's on our agenda, having to do with Laughing Dogs. There were some other correspondences that had to do with Sandy Beach and some questions about what that was going to look like. There was some other correspondence with regard to EMS and concerns about the outcome of that situation, as well as some general questions about the agenda items that are on with the ATV/UTV ordinance and the difference between ordinance and a resolution.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes. Okay. I received correspondence about EMS and the way forward and how to do this. I received correspondence about the Flex Grant for EMS. I received correspondence both for and against this ATV ordinance on the agenda tonight. I received correspondence in support of the Laughing Dog conditional use permit. And I also received correspondence about a garage issue, trying to build one in the city. That was more in regard to my role on the planning commission.
I'm sorry. What was the last one?
Yes. It was a correspondence about trying to build a garage in the city. There were some issues. And it was more a question to me in my role in the planning commission.
Okay.
And I don't have further details. Actually, I've tried to reach back out to the person, and I've not been able to.
Okay. Great. Thank you. My correspondence was much the same as the two that just went, except I had one additional correspondence. Someone from the community forwarded me an event that's happening on Saturday at the Boy Scout Dunk Tank, Saturday at noon. Mrs. Bishop will be in the Dunk Tank, so please come and throw the ball and dunk her and get her wet. And it's a great charity thing for the Boy Scouts, of course.
What was that date and time again?
Saturday at noon. Is that right?
Saturday at noon. Yes. I will be on the Dunk Tank.
All right. So, thank you for doing that. All right. Ms. Curler?
Yes. Really, much the same. Some correspondence regarding EMS, contacts both for and against the ATV/UTV ordinance, and several contacts in support of the Laughing Dog daycare.
Okay. Mr. Fields?
Very similar. I had a letter in support of the EMS. Actually, I had a couple of phone calls as follow-up from the work session that we had last week. Same correspondence about the elderly appreciation July 6. Did receive an email from Cody from Ryan Brothers requesting that he could submit a bid on our option six from Ryan Brothers. Several emails are about the support for Laughing Dogs. I only had one email in support of UTV/ATVs. And that's about it for me.
All right. Thank you. So, we'll move into our questions and public comment at this point. So, the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So, we are open for public comment. Floor is open. Anyone who would like to go? I know we have a couple people. And hit the microphone so that the green light comes on when you
I'm Tom Beakle, North 6617 Shore at Hills Road. I'm here tonight to speak on a very serious issue that our community, county, state, and nation struggle with, finding a sustainable model for EMS fire. I have had sleepless nights thinking about the EMS fire relationship and also trying to figure out why the leaders in this community have been largely left out of a life and death issue that affects our area residents. This is just, this is not just a city issue. It affects the residents and our overall surrounding community. We have seen the options, but we have not seen a roadmap or a plan of how to get there. Regardless of option, we need to make sure that any change fosters an extremely great culture. Without culture, staffing levels fail, morale fails, and then the model fails. Without community leader involvement and resident engagement, a referendum fails. There is not a rush to get there if the Lake Mills EMS is willing to stay on, and I am pretty sure they will fight it out. Rushing into this, unless necessary, would be equivalent to a gladiator charging into a villain-filled arena without armor, a shield, and a sword, and expected to be victorious. We have had the chance in this great community to build something incredible. I've heard things like dissolve an entity, or an era has come to an end. This is not the end. It is merely improving the service that fire and EMS have worked so hard to achieve over the years. This should be about improving upon fire and EMS past efforts and writing a new extraordinary chapter that makes our model leader in this great state of Wisconsin. However, it's going to take all of us to get there, all of the entities to sit at the table, and a sound intermediary that has excellent experience and has done this before. We can ill afford to lose any staff, EMS or fire. At this point in time, many community leaders feel it is imperative to keep the Lake Mills EMS viable, providing that they communicate with us by keeping us apprised with financial status, staffing issues, and other concerns until we can work through to achieve a new model. Things like the how-tos in the formation of a support/commission that can back EMS fire for the long haul. As a town leader, I do not want to leave anyone in the community left behind, and I utterly refuse to let that happen. I am sure Lake Mills EMS and Fire have differences to work out. True leaders work through this humbly to reach compromise. This can be done with the right approach. This is a great time to start fostering culture, a great time for Fire to work with EMS where needed, if staffing does become a concern, until we get to a much-needed new model that will work. This issue is also not the decision of one. Granted that our city manager has worked towards putting option framework together. I think all of us are appreciative towards that. This is a communal effort of leaders, residents, EMS, Fire, and other professionals to get to where we need to be. We are blessed to live in a wonderful community, town of Atzaland, city of Lake Mills, town of Lake Mills, town of Milford, town of Waterloo, and others. We live on a great lake, have great parks and recreation. There is plenty of incentive here to offer EMS and Fire staff to foster a great culture and keep staffing levels and morale high. It is our duty, not the duty of one person or one council, but a combined effort. We need our town boards to agree 100%. We need a council that is 100% on board, and we need the vote of confidence that EMS and Fire are 100% on board, as well as our community residents. This can and should be worked towards. It will take some compromise, but I remain faithful that we can get there and get a big win for our community that empowers the efforts of the Lake Mills EMS and Lake Mills Fire. Let's all be leaders in this. I want our Lake Mills Fire and EMS to be the ones talked about for years to come on how they became an elite entity. They deserve that. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Tom? All right. Thank you, Tom. The floor is open.
I'm Tom Murphy. I live at 317 West Lake Street. I'm also the EMS president. First off, I'd like to apologize to the council and any of the board members that were here for missing the work session last week. Unfortunately, I was called out on an EMS call just a little bit before. I want to point out that Lake Mills EMS has stated all along that we'll work with the affected municipalities to provide a smooth transition to whoever takes over 911 ambulance service in this area. We will provide service on a month-to-month basis until we terminate. So, there is no need to rush into a solution at this point. There could be negotiated concessions that might be necessary for us to continue on at some point. Lake Mills EMS would be glad to participate in a combined negotiation with the city and the townships. Lake Mills EMS has not missed responding to a first unit call in 48 years. Few services can say that. We want to make sure that we continue that standard of care. We regularly staff second and third unit calls also. Lake Mills EMS has contracted to staff one ambulance 24/7 for 365 regardless of call volume. We often provide second and third ambulances at no additional cost to the communities. In the recent newspaper article, it stated that in 2013, Lake Mills had 31 advanced EMTs, and today we only have 11. In fact, in 2013, Lake Mills EMS had 31 total members in our organization, and today we have 19 total members, and we have 11 advanced EMTs. And under the unit hour utilization in the memo, it states that it takes five hours to clear a call. Lake Mills EMS averages about two and a half hours. We're available for another call as soon as we are back on To be successful, we need to have a plan that retains all Lake Mills Emergency Service volunteers, both Fire and EMS, and comes up with a way that we can work together smoothly. And we will stay around and be available for questions later on during the discussion if you guys would like us to be. Thank you.
Any questions for Tom? I have a couple, Tom, real quick.
Okay.
When we had that meeting last week, some of the townships had mentioned the culture issue between the Fire Department and the EMS. Do you feel there's a culture problem? And if there is, what kind of problem is there?
It seems to be that the culture problem has to do with the Fire Department doesn't want to come over and have any of their trained EMTs sign up and take call with us. It's, I don't have a good answer for why that is. It just seems to be the issue.
And then, I'm just taking a quick note here. And you had mentioned the month-to-month situation. So, we've been looking at kind of a January 1 deadline. You're saying that that's not a, that's not a firm deadline, that we could go month-to-month past that and continue to work with the current EMS services?
Yes. That's what we're saying.
Okay.
And that's under the assumption we don't have some catastrophic thing happen to somebody at our service, because we're operating at a pretty fine line, as everyone else. And like I stated in the middle here, I don't want to be in a position where we miss a call and jeopardize that standard of care with our first-out ambulance.
Okay. Great. That's all I have. It helps me a lot. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks.
Hi. I'm Nancy Babel. I live at 130 East Oak Street, and I'm here to just have a statement in support of Laughing Dogs and their conditional use permit. I've been taking my dog there for five years, and they provide an invaluable service to the community. It's very convenient that my dog, when I travel, you know, can board at the same place that she's familiar with. She actually has some anxiety going and, you know, can hurt herself, and the staff knows that, knows what to do. And I can travel without really worrying that something's going to go wrong with my dog. You know, there really isn't any other place in Lake Mills that, you know, provides boarding. So, you know, there's a lot, in these days, well, it's always been that our pets are really important to us, and you can hardly, you know, go away and worry about your pet if they're in someplace strange, or the dog doesn't know anyone. And then, the second thing I want to say, as a business owner in Lake Mills, too, is we need to support our small businesses. And, you know, Jamie's been serving the community, you know, for at least five years, and, you know, it's tough to do that. So, I just hope that, you know, we can support her business. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Any questions?
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Jamie Almquist. My address is N 7294 Newville Road in Waterloo, 53594. And I'm the owner of Laughing Dogs at 200 Enterprise Drive in the Industrial Park. And I, we had a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting back in May. And at that meeting, our neighbor directly next door to us did have some concerns about noise, so I wanted to address that with you all. I don't see him here tonight, but I still think it's worth addressing. I did email some data to all of you last week, and so hopefully you had a chance to look at that. But his concern was about the decibel limit in the Industrial Park, and I just wanted to share publicly that we did, in good faith, invest in a decibel meter, and we put it on our side of the lot line in front of the trees that divide our businesses, just to kind of see, because truth be told, at that meeting, I didn't have any concept of what the decibel reading would even be. I learned a lot about how sound works over the last week. And as it turns out, there are very, very few times throughout the day that the decibel meter goes over 70, which is the supposed limit in the Industrial Park, based on what the city attorney said at that meeting. And because I was trying to figure out how the meter worked, I did stand out there, particularly during times when there were other things going on besides just our stuff, and things like semis accelerating, lawn mowers, dump trucks, and street sweepers register at over 70 at that particular location. So, the data that I sent demonstrates that there are very few blips that go over 70 throughout the day. I also just wanted to mention that, again, in good faith, we have made some modifications to the way that we do business in order to be good neighbors there. And I just want to make sure that myself and my staff don't feel intimidated into doing things that might be less beneficial to the dogs and to our clients and to our staff. So, we've made what changes we can, and we hope that it helps. But I do want to just be available if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Jamie? Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Going once, going twice. It's a great audience out there tonight. All right. So, public comment is closed. Move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Wilkie?
Two financial reports were provided, and they're pretty standard. Unless there are any questions, I'll pass.
Any questions for Mr. Wilkie? And if you do have something, Steve, just kind of wave in front of your face so I can see you there, or just speak up, all right?
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, I think you're off the hook there, Mr. Wilkie. We'll move on.
Thanks.
Item eight on the agenda is council member board report and acceptance of minutes from the Public Works Board minutes of May 10, 2022. Did you have any questions or a comment from a representing council member?
I'll just provide a comment. That was my first meeting as a member of the Public Works Board, and the board has a practice of doing an annual projects tour, which I found really instructive. So, I want to thank Paul and Dwayne for leading us in that tour and showing us around a number of the sites in town, and it might be something the city council wants to consider doing sometime, to see, you know, some of the major projects that are going on around the community. It was almost as hot as today, but we got the air conditioning going in the minibus. So, it was a good way to be able to talk with one another and hear about how the projects are moving along.
So, Paul and Dwayne, in the past, has council members joined in on that, or have you done that separately?
We've allowed, we have to allow the public to attend, and we've had public actually follow along in their cars. We have had additional council members attend over the years. So, yeah, it's not unusual.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what all the rules are as far as quorums, if the city council makes a quorum or anything like that, but it is, it's just a good way to kind of see what we're talking about. And we had to do it virtually the last couple of years, so it was nice to get back in the bus, even though it was hot. But it's a good exercise. So...
I think the, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I think the one that, where we had a lot of attendance was we actually toured all the facilities. We went into all the buildings, and we went through all the wastewater treatment plant operations, and we went to the wells, and through the light and water building, and parks, buildings, and that type of stuff. So, we had a pretty substantial attendance at that one.
So, we do face quorum issues if there's more than three council members, but what we do to get around that is we just make a posting that this is a potential quorum, a quorum meeting that council members may be attending. So, we would just post that. Is that like 48 hours ahead of time? We have to post something like that, or?
Usually, we post it with the regular agenda, because we have a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
But just say a couple of council members notified us after it went out. 48 hours is what we mean.
Okay.
Can I just mention, this is Misty, I have that notice on our Public Works Board agenda every single month. So, that was on there for that tour as well, that there would be a potential quorum.
Do you do that? Do you do that for the planning committee as well?
I'm 99% positive I do. I've got to pull up the last agenda just to verify it, but it was always done that way in the past. Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I realize this is a year off, but if we are going to have council member attendance, we need to know, because we get a really small bus.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will accept the Public Works Board minutes into our record. Moving forward to council business, item A is the private well permit application for Schmidt, 923 East Lake Street. Nothing was included in our agenda. What is the, I'll turn this over to staff. Discussion on this?
Properties are required, if they have a private well, that they have to file a permit. And at the last meeting, you did a whole group of private well permits, and this one just came in late. It's a recent annexation. And there is an application attached to it, which is pretty standard. So, just a motion to approve the private well permit
I'll move to approve the private well permit on 923 East Lake Street for the Schmidt household.
I do want to note that this is only for landscape watering. They are required to connect to city water and sewer, and they have been noticed.
All right. So, the motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. I think we just got staff comment. Is there any comments, any questions? Yes.
Yeah. I have a question. I know the, in the consent agenda, I think the applications also had the information about inspection, compliance, and a sampling data. So, I just wanted to make sure that, has this been reviewed to make sure that it complies with NRA 12, that it's no cross connections, that it's met the bacteria negative test requirements?
Misty, do you have the testing information?
At my desk, I don't have it in front of me, but before I would put it on the agenda, it would, I do require to see two test samples taken that have passed, which we would have received in order for, to come before you. So, it's usually attached with the application. I'm not logged in the same way you guys are, so I can't see it right now.
The, I can add that they're still on their private well. They haven't had their water and sewer connection completed yet. So, there wouldn't be any information on cross connections.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, like I said, for other applications, we've usually seen those other pages, and I didn't see them here. So, just wanted to make sure that those requirements had been met.
Yeah. Misty usually puts these on, and she doesn't do that unless her got the tests. I can tell you that they haven't made the connections to city water yet, so there is no cross connection information to be available.
Okay. Oh, okay. Right. Because it had been just a private well previously. Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is a presentation on water quality. Mr. Hermanson?
Yes. Thank you. Dave, if you want to bring that presentation up, please. Just a little bit of background while he's doing that. What you're going to see is a presentation, or part of a presentation, that we actually did at the Public Works Board meeting, oh, several weeks, if not a couple of months ago. And basically, what they were looking for was a deep dive into all utilities, water, electric, and wastewater. So, what we did is just added the water quality presentation to this overview, with the understanding that, given that many of you have not been in the council a long time, maybe there's some information that will be useful to you, just on the way that the utility operates, and what we do, and how we do it, that sort of thing. So, I'm going to go through this fairly steadily, but certainly stop to ask any questions that you want to ask, and...
I think this is a follow-up from a request from Mrs. Bishop, correct?
That was, yeah. That was my comment before we get into this, that yes, this is based on a request to look at water quality in Lake Mills.
Okay. Great.
So, we will spend the bulk of our time on that. But I, we'll walk through this, and again, just ask questions. For those of you that were at the Public Works Board meeting, I can tell you, or actually, the presentation that's in your packet, this is a little bit different. I noticed the presentation that was in the packet didn't hold the formatting, so this one's got the right formatting. And when we did our test run, if you will, at the Public Works Board meeting, I noticed that the guy that put this together had misspelled some words, and so I shook him up a little bit. So, the water utility is a little bit different than our other utilities, the electric and the wastewater utility, in that it only serves within the city limits of Lake Mills. The other two actually serve outside of the city. So, this one, if they're residents and taxpayers, they're also ratepayers to the water utility. Just a little bit different. So, this is our system map. And this is our current staff right now. And if you notice... And if you notice that we have about a total of 11 years and one month of experience on our current staff right now. That's because we, oh, if you'd go back, Dave, just for a moment. Dave has done this before, so he's anticipating what I'm going to say, plus he's telling me to hurry the heck up. So anyway, you'll notice that Harold Dunkelberger's been with us 10 years, doing a fantastic job, then we've got two younger gentlemen. We lost two people in, within the last 18 months or so, lots of good experience, lots of knowledge, so that hurts, but I will tell you that the two young men that we have aboard now are doing an excellent job. They're very focused on customer service, they're very focused on learning, they ask a lot of questions and that's excellent. What it does is put a little more burden on Harold, of course, but overall, I think from a staffing standpoint, we're in pretty good shape for the long run here. Priorities, these are pretty classic. I mean, customer service, we try to make our, our number one priority, then safe water, and we'll talk about that, and complying with all the regulations that we have to, that we have a sufficient supply, and at this point, we do, and that our rates are both affordable so that the community can afford it, but they're also adequate so that we can maintain our system properly. So there, you see, we have about 41 miles of water main that we take care of and then a little over 2,600 utility service lines. Now, the difference between the main line, the main is the big line that runs down the street, and the service lines are the ones that move into the houses. And those have become pretty popular because of lead service lines and we'll talk just a little bit more about that also. Quick snapshot of our income and expense, you'll notice that last year, and I should back up and tell you that we do a, a report called a CCR, you'll see that a little bit more here, and PSC annual reports, so the latest data we've got will be from, we have will be from last year. And you'll notice that in 2021, our net operating income was pretty healthy, 628,000. But then you'll also notice that in, in 2020, it was a negative 23, and in 19, it was a quarter of a million, and 18, it was 70, minus 72,000. What happens is that we try to use cash as much as we can to pay for projects. And so what those years are reflecting, for example, all the work that we did on Main Street, and so those were extra costs that we had. When we painted the water tower in 2018, that's why our revenue, our net operating income was so low. So it'll fluctuate because by using cash, we can keep our rates down a little bit, and so we try to do that as much as possible. I also want to mention something called the pilot or the payment in lieu of taxes. This is because as a nonprofit organization, the utility doesn't necessarily pay property tax, so instead, the Public Service Commission has a calculation that allows the utility to pay tax dollars to the city, and those are the last five years of those payments. I will note that the electric utility does the same thing and the electric utility payments are a little bit higher. I believe between the two, it's somewhat, somewhere over, boy, a half million to 600,000 dollars that the two utilities paid to the city.
525,000 dollars, Paul.
Say it again?
525,000 dollars.
There we go. So, that in essence makes the two utilities one of the largest property taxpayers in the city. All right, more stats, we have about 3,200 total customers. In '21, we pumped 172 million gallons of water and of those, we sold 140 million. I will talk about that a little more. You'll notice those numbers don't jibe up because that's what we have, what we call water loss, and that is simply water that is lost in the system, inaccuracy of meters, et cetera, et cetera. The PSC and the DNR accept that 15% water loss is acceptable, so it's a very common thing that not all the water that's pumped is actually billed. Now, you will notice on this graph, and I'm looking at the dark purple line on top, we had some issues back a few years ago where our water loss was getting up in the 30% range, and so we made a concerted effort to get that down. And we did that by looking more closely for leaks. We did a leak study and we found a number of those, and it was a combination of small leaks, not big ones that would appear in the street or something like that, but small leaks, and, as you may be aware, we went to an AMI meter reading system, which is a much more sophisticated, much more accurate meter reading system, and we were able to recoup and find some loss because meters were not registering accurately. So right now, we're down to about 16% and we're continuing to work to get that even lower.
Mr. Hermanson, I have a question on the water loss. Is it, is it usually fairly easy to kind of know where some of your leaks are in the system, or are they difficult to detect?
It's a combination. Some, some are fairly easy. If a water main breaks, for example, ultimately, it's going to end up showing up in the road. Now, it may take a while and it depends on what kind of soil, what time of year, that sort of thing. Once, I'll back up, we fix those as fast as we see them. The ones that cause the problem are the small leaks and they're quite often in service lines before the meter, excuse me, or in dead end lines that don't necessarily have a lot of pressure to them, but they leak. So the answer to your question is some are really easy to find because they come squirting out of the ground and others, we, I'm sure we still have some, so those are more difficult to find. The AMI meter reading system is helping us locate those, so if, if, if the meters just don't jibe up, we know there's an issue there. All right, changing topics just a little bit, we talk a lot about how old our system is and how, how the mains are aging and we have to maintain our infrastructure. Pipe can last a long time, as you'll see in the next slide, but right now, we know that about 40% of our main lines are more than 50 years old, which means, to a certain extent, they're coming to the end of their life. And so we either have to start replacing mains or understand that we'll have to be doing something with them. There's a lot of technology now for fixing the mains from the inside, not necessarily after replacing them or have to replace them, there's liners, et cetera, et cetera. But the point of this slide is that it's not uncommon for communities to let their mains go, out of sight, out of mind, kind of thing, but we can't allow that to continue to happen.
So Paul, that 12 and a half percent that's 100 years old, is that on the, the list to, to get updated here soon, or?
It's, yeah, hopefully. It's kind of a tough call. When they've been in the ground that long and they haven't leaked, they may not, so you kind of don't want to disturb them. But on the other hand, when we know they're that old, yeah, they gotta go, they have to go.
Our, our priority has been water mains that have lead lateral, lateral service histories, so they tend to be the older mains, but it doesn't necessarily gain, mean 100 year old mains, because they use lead, what, from the 20s, 30s, 40s and 50s, so. That's primarily where we've been working.
Just a follow-up to that, I know it's pretty common for us to be doing street water and sewer all at one time, right? So is sometimes maybe the sewer or the street needs is the driver and maybe the water main replacement is not the oldest one, but it's just the efficiency of doing them all at the same time?
Yeah, good point. And so as we sit down and do our improvement plan every year, we do take into account the age of the mains in a particular area and what it'll cost to replace them. There's several criteria and they kind of bounce around in priorities, but yeah, that's certainly a part of our discussion.
Thanks.
Okay, and this is just a, a quick snapshot of pipe lifespan, lifespan. You know, I've been around a long time and, and people give me a hard time that I helped put in some of the old wooden pipes. I didn't do that, I just want you to know that I wasn't there for that. But the photo you see kind of in the middle, that's what a new pipe looks like when it goes in, and the one below it is what a pipe looks like when it's kind of lived its life. And please remember that picture because I'm going to come back to that in regard to another slide. So the other thing I'll, the other point I'll make here is that we are now looking more and more at going away from metal, if you will, or cast iron pipe to plastic or PVC, if you will. And the technology there has gotten better, so that, that is something we're looking at doing quite, more of in the near future. Just a little bit of context, this is from a report that Utah State University does. Small versus large utilities, typically small utilities have twice as many main breaks as the large ones, and that's usually due to finances, that the small ones don't have as much capital to use to, or to replace pipe before it breaks. Corrosion is the biggest deal and we'll talk again more about that. There you see that the average age of the failing mains is 50 years, and so when we've got a large group of our water mains that are 50 years old, we know they're going to start failing. Now, the contrast to that is the national rate of replacement is about 125 years. So you see, you can see there's a contradiction there that we have to take care of. The average repair cost of a water main break is about $5,000. The average cost to repair or to replace a water line before it breaks is much lower than that, and so our goal is to not have a, a length of pipe that's nothing but repairs at 5,000 bucks a foot, give or take, where if we replace them, we can do it much cheaper. All right, we are under the regulation of three different entities and this goes to the water quality that, you know, the EPA, the Public Service Commission and the DNR all watch us very closely. They all have very stringent rules for the quality of our water. The PSC really oversees more of the cost while the EPA and the DNR really are the water quality regulators. Our operator requirements are quite stringent. We have to have a certified operator based on administrative code. We are working toward having all of our, both of our younger operators get their certification and then operators have to renew their certification on a regular basis and take continuing education, so it's a big deal. I just wanted to note that we do have also very stringent and lengthy water testing requirements. If you saw in your packet, I believe there's three to four pages of water tests that we have to perform every day. And when I say every day, that's seven days a week, 365 days a year. So even on weekends and holidays, someone has to go out and take water samples and make sure that even on those days, our water is meeting the grade. I mentioned the consumer confident report, confidence report. This is something that is required by the EPA that we have to do annually and it lists all the detected contaminants. Now, that's a key phrase there. We test for a number of contaminants, as you saw in your packet. Only the ones that are detected or the ones that show up as existing in our water system are listed in the CCR and the Consumer Confidence Report. So if they're not listed there, that means that there was either no detection or it was so far below the minimum contamination level that it's insignificant. So that's a report, actually, the, the 2021 report just came out, it will be in the newspaper next week, and then we also post it on our websites so that anybody who wants to see that can see that. And if you want to go back and see previous years, you can go to the DNR website and you can see, I believe, back to, wow, I think 1982 or something like that. What it does is just ensures that we comply with the drinking water rules and it provides education to the community as to what's in our water. So I'm beginning into some specifics now from last year's report, and again, I will show you everything that showed a detection level in the report. If it wasn't in the report, there was no detection level shown and so we, it's not, it's just not significant at this time. Chlorine residuals, now, we do add chlorine to the water for sanitation, but we also have to test to see how much of that chlorine remains in the system, excuse me, for two reasons. One is to make sure that it's going throughout the system and secondly, to make sure that it's not at a level that's too high. I don't know if any of you have ever had swimming pools, you know that when the chlorine level is too high, it's, it burns, it smells, all that stuff, so we walk a fine line there. In all of the slides, I'm going to show you, the blue line is the minimum contamination level and the other colored lines are what our levels were. So you can see that both chlorine types, the HAAAS and the TTHM are very low compared to the MCL, but they're high enough that we know that they're getting through the entire system.
Paul?
Yep.
You said minimal contamination level?
I'm sorry, maximum, maximum contamination level, sorry about that. Makes a big difference. All right, radioactive contaminants. This one's a little bit different story now. There's two tests that we do. One is for radium 226 and 228 and then one is for the combined radium. And I'll show you, talk about the combined radium first, that's the orangish line, the real small line, very low compared to the MCL. Now, the radium 226 and 228, little different story. As you can see there, our levels went up until the point where they reached 5.5 parts per liter. Can't remember that one. Oh, a million parts per liter, sorry. And what they, what the DNR does with this one is they have a rolling average. In other words, they take four quarters, four quarters tests, four tests a year, and average them and come up with the MCL. We exceeded that, as you can see, back a couple of years ago, so that we, the, the max was five parts, we were at five and a half parts on this rolling average in one well. And so what we did is a lot of research on this particular well, it was well number four, and found that most of the radium leakage, if you will, or seepage, was coming from the bottom 100 feet of the well. So we abandoned that, we sealed it. And you see now that our MCL is coming down steadily. So we were able to mitigate the source of the radium and we continue to monitor that very closely. The other two wells, five and six, we have not seen any issue at all.
Paul?
Yep.
I'm just a question, so the radium is, and just for, I guess, everyone's knowledge, the radium is a natural existing compound that's in the groundwater, right? As opposed to the chlorine residuals, that's something that's added to the, to the drinking water in, in the system?
That's correct. And in fact, in well number four, the type of rock that the lower 200 feet the well was in was known as common radium producing rock. And so by abandoning that, that's how we realized if we abandoned that, we'd be okay. But yeah, it's, it is a naturally occurring thing. I will tell you that five and a half parts is very low, as you can see by the other MCLs there. So we were not at a level that was a danger, but we were at a level that triggered some action and we took the action. But yeah, it, it occurs quite naturally in a lot of different things.
Paul?
Yep.
Quick clarification, what I'm hearing is that contamination like radium from a natural source requires mitigation at the source, we sealed off the well, we don't use it anymore, as opposed to filtration before it enters people's homes?
We had an option. And so by doing some investigating, we found that, and we do it by taking samples at different levels in the well, I should tell you that the wells are well over 800 feet deep, so, you know, we've got some capacity there. That's where we found the different rock formations. And then through the testing, and by the way, we hire a, a company to do that, we found that that's where the radium was coming from. And so we just sealed off a portion of it. We didn't seal off the whole thing, we sold, or sealed off a portion of it. Our other option, had that not worked, would have been to go to a, a filtering system of some sort. Other communities had to do that, it's a very expensive proposition, so we feel very fortunate that we were able to find and fix it this way.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Thank you. All right, barium, another one that shows up. Again, we are well below the, the MCL, but it's something that has shown up in our reports. And I think this is the last one, fluoride, again, fluoride is something we put in the water, it's for dental reasons. We do test again, just like with the chlorine, we want, we want to make sure it's getting through the system, but we don't want to get it through the system in such a level that it becomes dangerous. Once again, we are well below the MCL with fluoride.
Paul, I, oh.
Go ahead.
You were going to nickel. Okay, nickel's the last one, but I do have a question. I noticed lead wasn't listed here as a contaminant in this report. It was listed in our 2020 consumer confidence report. So is lead now no longer showing up in these tests for the city sources?
If you're, if you're all right, I'll talk about that in just a little bit.
Sure, of course.
Get into more detail on, that's a big one.
Okay, I didn't mean to cut you off there, I was just.
We'll, we'll talk about that one. Okay, and I, I'm sorry, nickel also, it was detected, but at a very low range. I should tell you too now that arsenic is something we have to test for every year, it wasn't something we always had to do, so it's always going to be in our CCR. Zero was detected and so that's a good thing. And then nitrates is something that, again, we test for, but the last time we had any kind of detection was in 2016. So the fact that it's not in the CCR in 17, 18, 19, 20 is simply because the level was so low that it wasn't detected. So I just, before we leave those, I just want to note that what all of that says is that our water system is very safe. It meets all the regulations, in fact, it exceeds many. It meets all the regulations, in fact, it exceeds many of the regulations. And the amount of testing that we have to do and that other communities have to do ensures that the water system is safe. We'll get into a couple of slides here in a little bit that respond to some of the issues that we hear about that make people think it's not safe. But from a health standpoint, our water is safe. So now to the lead and copper rules. First, lead and copper go together because they do come in concentrations that are probably a little higher than some of the other things that we've talked about, and they're much more common. Lead and copper are very common in a water system, very common in the water you drink, almost to the point where a certain level is expected and will probably never get it out. And I'm going to talk about another product called PFOS in a little bit. That's another issue that we're fighting with, but. Lead and copper. So the first rules really came out in 1991. And then it wasn't until 2014 when an issue occurred in Flint, where lead in the water was extremely high, dangerously high. And I want to make sure everybody understands that we're not Flint. The water that we provide is not full of lead. The lead comes from the service lines that go from the main line into the home. And so it's a very individual situation. And that's why the DNR and the EPA are requiring that people remove lead service lines. So we were required, and I don't know if we've got a slide on this or not, but we were required, starting back in 2017, to do some extensive testing. We were doing 40 tests a year, or, excuse me, 40 tests twice a year at homes that were selected by the DNR because they were known to have had lead water supplies, lead water pipes, not with supplies, lead water pipes. And the tests came back high and some incredibly high. And we were having all kinds of trouble, trying to figure out what's going on here. And what we learned was that when the water goes through the pipes, at times, it actually breaks off little pieces of lead. And so we would get a test one month that was incredibly high, and the next month it was nothing. And that was simply because little pieces of lead were breaking off, getting into the test kit. Regardless, the DNR worked with us very closely to do some really good testing, do some other things with our corrosion control, because that's a big deal, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But to just really get a handle on how much lead was turning up in these samples. And I will tell you again, now, it's not that there's lead in the water. It's just that there are lead service lines. And they were very predictable in where they were going to be located. They were in the older parts of town. And it was very predictable that at a house where there were more people and typically younger people, where they ran more water, the tests were low. In homes where there were, say, fewer people and elderly people, where they didn't run as much water, the tests were high. Because what happens is the water sits in the pipe and then the lead leaches into it. So it became very predictable and very clear what we had going on. So we have now worked through this to the point where we've replaced a number of lead service lines. And at one point, actually, we're still in the point where we now no longer have to test for lead, that our concentration levels went down so low that although we have to continue replacing lead service lines, we don't have to test for lead anymore. Now, there's another caveat to that, and I'll cover that in just a moment. Go ahead.
Paul, I don't recall exactly, but wasn't it sometime in the late 1980s that lead was no longer allowed to be in the plumbing? So if people have a home that was plumbed more recently than that, they wouldn't need to be concerned about this at all? Is that right?
Yeah, we identified, I think, the mid-'70s. Yeah.
Okay.
Mid-'70s.
So it's not currently used for service lines, lead?
No, it's not.
It's been used for decades?
It was banned.
I think lead service lines had been out of norm since the early '60s. Mainly, everyone went to copper. But lead solder was used extensively in home plumbing with the copper pipes, and that's where a lot of that comes from. Recently, they've been moving to plastic, and so there's a lot more, a lot less lead used. And they also went to a lead-free solder. So it's made a lot of difference in how much newer homes, how much lead they experience. Now, maybe they'll have PFOS from the plastic pipe.
Dear.
We did, I don't think I have it in here, but we did an inventory. We went to every home in the city, at least every home in the core where we knew they were built before 1970-ish. And we know, as far as we can tell, we know where every lead service line is in the city. We were a bit of a pioneer in the state of Wisconsin with that. That is now a requirement by the DNR that every city do that inventory. We did ours a couple of years ago. We did not do it in some of the newer subdivisions like Brookstone, et cetera, because we knew there wasn't lead out there. So that's part of our program, to reduce the amount of exposure people have to lead. Now, I think I do mention it in another slide here. Okay, Dave, thank you. Now, the DNR has what they call consent orders. And these are not anything that you want to deal with, okay? But we got nicked with a few, and understandably so. When we had, our lead sampling was too high, we had the radium level that was too high. And so what happens is the DNR puts together consent order, and what that does is outlines very clearly what we have to do. And there's no getting around it. It's an edict. I will tell you that we have been able to successfully work through all of the consent orders. We don't have any more hanging over us right now. And in fact, like I mentioned, in regard to the inventory and some of our tactics, if you will, techniques for replacing lead service lines, we're a leader. So we took a really, excuse my language, a really crappy situation, and we turned it into something positive for the city. So although not real proud of the fact that we had to go through this process, we are really pleased that we did and that we did some valuable things. And this is what I'm talking about. So we did this citywide LSL inventory. We are able to reduce the sampling requirement. It's gone. So far, of approximately 300-plus lead service lines, we replaced 178 on the resident side and 173 on the utility side. Understand what that means is that from the main line to a valve the city owns, and then from that valve into the house is what the resident owns. So we've replaced the entire length of some of these. Extensive education on what lead means in the drinking water, what can be done. We've given out a number of filters so that people can feel comfortable drinking their water because it's gone through a lead-specific filter, that sort of thing. We are in the process now of adjusting our corrosion control. And what this means is that we put a product into the water in very, very small amounts that literally coat the pipes. And the idea of coating the pipes is to prevent the lead from leaching into the pipes. And so we worked with the DNR. We set up a test at one of our wells. It literally mimicked a house, or actually, four houses. And we tested four different products to see which one was the most effective. And after 18 months of doing that, we found the product that works best in our system. And now we'll be implementing that. We have to have that done by the end of this year, and we're going to be ahead of that goal also.
Paul, I want to throw in one thing here. We replaced 173 while there were 178 residents. That's because if it's, if ours is lead, we have to replace it if the resident is replacing it. But because ours was already copper, we didn't have to. That's why our number was lower. I don't want people to go away thinking that we left the lead service later on.
Right.
But the difference is only five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, so far, that's going to change. Because we know there are some that are lead the entire way. We also found some that were lead partway, then copper, then lead, then copper. It got a little muddy. But as I mentioned, we mitigated the radium issue, looking good there. And overall, we improved the water system, which ultimately was the goal of everybody involved here. So I just want to give you some real quick rate comparisons here in all of Wisconsin for all the water utilities. The range for 300 gallons a month is anywhere from $152 to $17. The average rate, as you see, is $44 per month, and we're at about $48, $49 per month. We're close. We don't anticipate, and I'm never going to say never, a rate increase for a while. But we do know that some of the other cities that are sitting in the average rate class there have not started an LSL program, and so they're going to have costs, have not started a corrosion control program, so they're going to have costs. Their rates are going to go up. So if we can hold steady, we're going to hang around the average rate pretty well, I do believe. We just want to always give a caveat to the rate comparisons. This is kind of what I was just mentioning. This information comes from the PSC annual report. We're pretty fastidious about how we put our report together. I should say, Dwayne is very fastidious about how that goes. We know that some other cities are not. And I won't kick anybody around, but they are not. Utility characteristics are vastly different, water supplies, size, that sort of thing. We also, we put in here, we're not eligible for grants because our median household income is too high. So we had a little trouble getting grants to do a lot of repairs. So like I say, it's got to come out of cash. And then, as I mentioned, a lot of the other communities are going to start doing some of the projects that we've been doing right along. Main rate cost, rate drivers, our replacement program. We've been pretty aggressive the last few years. We'll see how it goes with budgets. We hope to keep doing that, but again, budgets will dictate that.
When you say aggressive, Paul, let's back up, Dave. It says that you're supposed to replace 2,700 feet a year. There's one year in the 20 years I've been here, we've made that number. And in the 20 years I've been here, we've had more main replaced than in the previous 100 years.
Yeah, I guess I'd say that by comparison. We're a little more aggressive by comparison. But we've been at a real steady, steady rate, and that's a good thing. These two things are going to keep coming at us, the replacement and the corrosion control. So we've got to keep at it. We've got probably, oh, man, help me out, Dwayne, 130 some more LSLs to replace?
211.
211, thank you. And, I'm sorry.
And 146 of ours.
And 146 of our own. So we are getting funding to do that, but physically, we can't do that many in a year. So we've probably got about two, three years left on the LSL replacement. Like I mentioned, the corrosion control, that'll be in place yet this year. Okay, couple of specifics. Brown water, not uncommon, ugly, ugly stuff. It's unpleasant, but it is safe. Basically, what it is, is sediment from the pipes. If you remember the slide I showed you earlier, you go from the newer pipe to the older pipe, they rust. And what happens is that any disturbance, any significant disturbance in the system will break loose, some of this iron and manganese. It could be a water main break. It could be, for example, shutting a fire hydrant too fast or opening it too fast. It just, it knocks the system. You know, in your house, if you sometimes turn off a faucet too hard, you get that hammering noise or something like that, especially in older homes. That's what happens in our system. Every year, we do hydrant flushing, as is required, and that disturbance will cause brown water. Again, it's ugly, and you certainly don't want to bathe in it, and I would discourage anyone from washing their whites in it. But it usually will clear up in a couple of days. And so what we do is ask people to just run the water for a little longer, flush that out of the system. If it lasts too long, then we ask people to give us a call, and we'll look to see if something else is happening. Most of the time, it's coming from the water system. Occasionally, it could come from the home, particularly the hot water heater, or the water heater, if you will.
Paul, is there a regular time in which the hydrants are flushed so that we can maybe make that more public and people can anticipate if the brown water is coming?
Yes, good question. And it's typically in the spring of the year, very early spring, maybe March and April, we do that. And we do try to get information out. We try to put it on the websites and that sort of thing, but certainly, we can do a better job of letting people know that.
Thanks, Paul.
It's also historically been in the newspaper.
Yeah.
The newspaper.
There you go. Oh, I don't like to hear that noise. But anyway, I also manage the electric utility. I don't want to go through another Monday. Anyway, so water smells like chlorine. So brown water and the water smells like chlorine are the two biggest complaints, if you will, that we get from folks. Again, the chlorine is added for sanitation. People are not actually smelling chlorine. I know this is splitting hairs. They're smelling the chloramines, which is, the chlorine is working. That's the breakdown of the chlorine. And actually, that's what you smell in a swimming pool, is the chlorine breaking down and doing its job. You may smell this if, for whatever reason, we've got a higher level of algae or something in the water. That doesn't happen very often, but it may. Or if you're near a dead-end line. And what happens in the dead-end lines, as you see there, the water becomes stagnant. And when that happens, the chlorine works very hard to try to keep that clean. And so that may cause it. Every once in a while, although it's highly regulated, we may overchlorinate, maybe because of a malfunction or something like that. And so if the water does smell like chlorine, we ask people to call us immediately. It could be very minor and something that's going away. Or again, it could be that something has happened in the system that too much chlorine is getting in there. All right, some of the regulations for the future. Of course, we talked about lead, PFOS. This one's been in the news a lot. It's going to be in the news a lot. We did a test. We did a voluntary test for PFOS. And at all three wells, the tests came back lower than the tests were able to detect. In other words, according to the DNR's letter, we do not have PFOS in the city. Now, just read today that the EPA has put out standards saying that the PFOS, now, I should say PFOS is a general term for all these things. There's a lot of different ones. There's, and I can't remember all the acronyms and all that stuff. But they are now saying that some of the PFOS, if they have levels of .004 parts per trillion, that is too high. The interesting part about that is, right now, we don't have a test that can detect at that low a level. Again, this is something that's going to continue to be looked at. What they've done is they've made a health advisory, which is not meaning that anybody has to do anything. It's just be aware that a rule is being worked on in regard to PFOS. And where that'll go, we don't know. But it'll be a topic for quite some time. And for you, those of you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Based on testing standards, we're in pretty good shape here.
We are in very good shape. Yeah. And I just, for those of you that understand, PFOS are man-made chemicals that were made so well, they don't break down, they don't destroy, they live forever. And so they were something that came around in the '40s, and now, 80 years later, we have to figure out a way to get rid of them. I will also say that EPA has designated at least a billion dollars to mitigating this issue. How that's all going to play out, again, I don't know. We know that radium will continue to be an issue. We'll continue to monitor it. Now, the bottom two, the security and the supply, security is becoming a huge issue right now. We're looking at different ways to ensure the security, the physical security of our facilities. Because it's a security thing, I'm not going to tell you a lot about what we're doing, but we do have to make sure that nobody can tamper with our water system. And of course, as the city grows, supply is going to be a big issue. But I think we're in pretty good shape right there now, too. Future issues will be what happens on the south side. If that continues to grow, that's a little far from our water tower, and we want to make sure we have adequate pressure out there. If something happens on the north side of the interstate, that's going to require considerable adding to our infrastructure, water tower, things like that. As I mentioned, our facilities are getting old. We've got to stay on top of those. We are looking at, and the PSC is looking at, some sort of new rate structure and funding methods for utilities so that we can maintain affordability, that we can ensure that the entire community can afford water. It's far too important to price it out of affordability, so we're paying close attention to that. Always new regulations coming up. And staffing, I think right now, we're in pretty good shape. But overall, staffing in all of the department, of public works departments, water, electric, sewer, waste, and streets, staffing is an issue. We've got four openings right now, and we're having trouble finding qualified people to fill those spots. So this is a concern we have, not just in water, but within the entire DPW department. And our future goals, of course, are to keep the water safe and clean, keep it affordable, get our LSL replacements done, and continue our system upgrades. And I think, oh, look at all the goals we have. We have to do our security regulations. I kind of beat this one to death, so I'll stop there. I think we're Q and A then. Yeah, there we go. So any other questions?
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Yes.
I just wanted to ask if you could elaborate for the audience a little bit on the opportunity that's available for those 211 residents that still have lead service lines?
Sure. We, right now, are in the process Sure. We, we right now, are in the process of completing all the paperwork to get a grant that will be available to residents to replace lead service lines. So, we're getting more information out to the known sites, so we can get that taken care of. We got enough funding this year to do between 65 and 75 replacements. And so, we have those locations identified, and now, we're, we're working to get them involved in the program. The program that the DNR has right now, I should say, it's also the EPA, is a one-year program. And so, at the end of this year, that funding will be gone. And then, we have to apply for another round of funding. And our hope is that they continue to fund this, but there's no guarantee. So, I guess, bottom line, we're staying in touch with those 211 folks, and giving them every chance we can to, to get their line replaced. I'm going to guess that, you know, right now, it's not mandatory to do that. I'm going to guess that either insurance companies, or the DNR is going to say, it is now mandatory to get rid of those pipeline, those lead pipes, and then, there's going to be some scrambling. So, I hope people take heed and get that done as soon as they can.
And I think costs, if I recall, could be like three, four, or $5,000. But, the, the grant pays for 75%, right? So, it's, it covers quite a bit of the cost.
Yes. What we do is, we cover 75% of the homeowner's cost to replace their line, up to a maximum of 3,750. And that's based on the average cost we're seeing to replace is about $5,000.
Thanks.
Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say, Paul, thank you for the report. It was very thorough, comprehensive, a lot of good updates, too, especially with the PFAS levels for now, and with what we're doing for the lead and the service lateral replacements. So, I appreciate the time that you've put into this and presenting it to us.
Thank you. And I hope it, I hope it got to your question or your concern, that we, we covered that.
Yes, thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yes?
I do have a question about, you had mentioned the PVC piping, that it'd be the possible next thing for plumbing pipelines. Do we know if there's, I mean, because chlorine is a pretty caustic chemical, and I'm concerned, over the course of time, do we know what the overall effect chlorine against PVC could have? I mean, are we going to run into another PFAS situation, I don't know, so?
I will tell you that I'm not an expert on that chemical reaction between the pipe and the chlorine. I will tell you that the level of chlorine is very low, and it's been used, this plastic piping has been used in swimming pools and other places for many years. And so, I think we've got a pretty high level of confidence that it will last. How long? No guess, really. Quite honestly, the biggest issue with the plastic piping before was when it was buried, and then soil was placed on top, it did what they called eggshell. So, it was no longer round, but it became like an eggshell. And then, it caused weaknesses on the edges, and it broke. So, that was the biggest concern, not so much the, the chemical reaction and stuff.
That makes sense.
So, Paul, you listed the lifespan of different piping material, but it didn't include plastic. What's lifespan on the plastic?
Don't know yet. Yeah, I mean, they have tests that say that it's, you know, infinity, but I don't know how, how real that is. So, I, you know, quite honestly, I would say that anything over 50 years is a guess. So, we, you know, we don't really know that yet.
So, in 50 years, we'll find out, huh?
You will.
I don't know about that. But, thank you for the well wishes, though.
If, if I'm here in 50 years, you'll have to call me Methuselah.
So, any other questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul. That was a great presentation. You went over the three-minute limit, but other than that, you went over the three-minute limit.
Oh, did I?
Does that mean I never have to come back again?
I don't think so, but thank you. All right, next on the agenda is discussion on emergency medical services, also known as EMS. Mr. Wilkie?
Yeah, we had a meeting last Thursday, and we went over some topics. We mainly looked at goals that each one of the towns had, because there, all the towns were represented at that meeting. I did want to note, that I verified with the city clerk, that she had emailed the agenda link before the meeting to all the town clerks. So, if the, if you didn't receive that, check with your town clerk and see if she can get that to you, or they can get that to you.
So, that includes all the materials that was presented?
That was all the materials. There was the memo and all the budgets, all six budgets. What I would like to have happen is, is if everybody can review those, those budgets, so that they have a good handle on what I had in those budgets. I think that's important. Then, it gives you a little bit better reflection on what the, what the goals are, and how you can handle them. Mr. Fields, in his conversation, in his spreadsheet, went over a proposal that had four people available 24 hours a day to fully staff, two ambulances, and then he went through some of it. I would like to go over that with him a little bit. Mine is not that comprehensive, in that I had one person available 24 hours a day, and then I had additional staff that was added on to that in a different way. So, the costs are going to be a little bit different. He also did something, he, he had a five-year replacement schedule on his, for his depreciation, I had a 10. They noted tonight that I had five hours. And, and if two hours is true, that means that you go from 80% to a 90% availability, or a 10% utilization, which actually works better for the proposal that I had than the other one, because it means that staff is available at least 90% of the time, or would be available 90% of the time, and the fire department's even less than that. So, those two items kind of fall together. I would like to meet with Steve and go over some numbers. There are some numbers in here that I, I have some questions on. I noticed in ours, he included the per capita, he didn't in the other one. So, that kind of makes it a funny number. And then, in the one, he had $50,000, but the total ended up being 794,000, whereas the other two proposal summaries that he had, those numbers matched up, and they don't match up here. So, those, those are kind of important numbers to go over. I do think relatively, other than the depreciation and that one number, it's relatively close, so, other than the staffing. So, I feel pretty comfortable with that. So, if there's any other things, we're going to have to meet again, I'm pretty sure we're going to, well, I, I plan on talking on it again at the next council meeting on July 19th, because if they're going to structure budgets this year, I have to have that by then, because I'm going to have, my first budget has to be out on, on September 1st. And so, I'd like to have that done. Now, I, I realize shortly thereafter, I'll be done, and then, other people can carry on with it. But, to have the initial structure in place, and the numbers, and the funding mechanisms, and the special revenue accounts set up, I've already got 100% of the spreadsheet budget done for 23, and I've done all the revenues, and they balance in the ClearGov budget. And so, by, hopefully by the end of the week, I'll have all the debt, or all the expenses in and ready to go. So, it'll go to staff, they'll start handling that, and it'll come back. So, this is, this will be probably the most significant outstanding number that, you know, if you continue to move forward with a proposal that would be in my timeline, I could do, would be, I need something by July 19th, or at least some level of confidence that I have, if I structure a budget, that's what you were looking for. I don't know that it has to be the last one, but at least it gives me something to work with. Any questions?
That's a lot to do for our next meeting.
Yeah.
So, with, when the budget scheme comes together, scheme's probably not the right word, but when the budget comes together, and we find that maybe we need to go to referendum, what would be the deadline, again, for, for that, going to referendum, if we're looking at this fall?
I would anticipate that if we have to go to referendum, we should know by the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Because you're going to want to have to structure a significant amount of information for the referendum, and you're going to also have to have the question prepared for the ballot that meets the statutory requirements of a referendum. And those are, can be pretty complicated. I've never liked them, it always makes it sound backwards. But, either way, it's, it's something that's important to make sure that you know how that's going to be worded, and then, being able to put together enough accurate information to present for a referendum question.
Yeah, it seems like the big thing on the referendum is public knowledge, education on why you need a referendum, and how that will impact the community somehow. So, okay. Any other questions?
Yes?
Yes, Mr. Fields.
Did we receive that letter from Coriette Ryan Brothers, that they would like to submit something? Are you going to give them a RFP, so that they can provide us with a quote for that option six?
Just for a quote, Steve, we don't need an RFP. Well, I told them maybe three months ago, on a, on a phone call, to go ahead and provide me the numbers. If the council decides that they want to head in that option, if he gives me a rough idea of what the budget is, I can put it in. If the council decides they want to head that way, then they have to go to RFP. So, we're, we're a significant distance away from requiring an RFP. It's more like saying, hey, can you give me a legitimate idea of what you're going to give us for a bid? Doesn't have to be perfect, but to write an RFP, just to get a budget number would be, would not be a practical idea.
The most private industries and something like that won't give out an R, or just a number, because that's something that their competitors would be able to get a hold of for bidding down, down the road. So, they're not going to give you a number unless you give them something formal.
Yeah, but under an RFP, you're pretty much guaranteeing them that you're going to give them, that you're looking at going that route, and we're not yet. So, you either have to make a legitimate effort to provide a budget estimate, or they have to give you some kind of quote that isn't held as an RFP number. So, it's, you're kind of between a rock and a hard place here, Steve, but it's, it's, there's no legitimate reason here to go out for an RFP. They should, if they're interested, they should give us some idea of what it's going to be, and how they would structure it, and then, we can move from there.
Will we come up with a number for that item six? Because basically, the number that you have punched in there right now is four times higher than, or 400% more than what Fort Atkinson is paying for service.
I went through and looked at the standards that would be provided, and the payroll, and the expenses, and those types of things. Fort Atkinson opted not to use that anymore, and went to hire their own people. So, I'm assuming that there are some issues there that go above and beyond the cost that was involved in that. So, kind of might direct back to your original question at the study session, related to which direction we want to go.
That's the challenge. Unless we have good detailed information, it's hard to determine which direction we should be going.
Yeah, well, all I can say is, is if he wants to provide the information, I'll, I'll take it. I asked him three months ago. And if he's willing to provide it, I haven't read the email yet, but if he's willing to provide it, I'm, I'm willing to figure out how to put it in.
Would you like one of us to contact again, then, to follow up on that email?
I'll talk to Greg and see how he wants to do it, and we'll move from there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, I wondered if we could discuss a little bit more, something that Mr. Fields, you brought up at our last, at our work session, and that's just the idea of, you know, what are our goals. And I've been thinking about that, and I, to a certain extent, I feel like I don't know enough how to kind of frame that conversation. But, we heard a lot in talking with the townships about not wanting to, nobody wants to lower the level of service. There's some interest in possibly raising the level of service, but I'm not really sure what, you know, what does that mean? How do you, how do you measure that? And one of the contacts that I received, constituent contacts, and there was a letter in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, related to this, is I think there's some confusion in the community about how many ambulances do you need, and, you know, well, why did the city buy an ambulance, and one's not enough. And, and so, I, I'm, I'm trying to think about this issue of goals, and I'm wondering, Mr. Fields, if you can kind of help us think about how, how we should think about those goals, or what should our goals be, and then, maybe, or, you know, what are the kinds of issues that we should have goals about, and then, that would hopefully help us to narrow our choices.
Yeah, that would be a great work session, just to set goals for what is the requirements of our ambulance service. We jump back and forth on some of these options. If we say we want two full-time staffed ambulances, that requires basically the manpower that was laid out in my spreadsheet. If we're going to say we're going to do one fully-staffed and one part-time, where you're using POCs, paid-on-call, well, it's pretty much the same model that you have right now. So, we need to sit down and basically figure out what are our goals. How many ambulances do we want in town? How many ambulances do we want staffed full-time, part-time? You know, are they volunteer, POCs, POCs? We need to build that structure. And once you build that structure, what is the requirement, that's kind of where an RFP comes in, is that we have to go out for a proposal. In order to create that, you have to have your goals, you have to have everything laid out. We need, we need to lay that out, so we can build budgets to it. Right now, we're reading it, it seems like we're jumping around between different resources, how we're loading that manpower-wise, with the fire EMS, and it's very difficult to follow without a good spreadsheet showing exactly what we need. It doesn't take long to build these spreadsheets. I built that one that we did the other night in two hours. It's not a big deal. We just need to sit down and set our goals. It'd be great to have another work session like we did with the townships, following the fire, pulling EMS. Let's sit down and work through this as a group. That would be the ideal way to do it. Find out who's on board, and what is going to work the best.
So, can I ask you a follow-up, then, on that, Steve? So, I, I guess, part of, part of what I think I'm struggling with this thinking about is, is, is setting a goal on how many ambulances we want, you know, one of the factors to consider, or do we want to consider, or is a goal more related to response time, and then, once you say, this is the response time we want, then that dictates how many ambulances do you need? You know, I'm, I'm feeling a little chicken and egg, so I don't know how to frame that goal.
The response time is more of a resource loading. If you say, as in Steve's memo upfront, that we want to get to a six-minute response time in the city, we have to have people standing by in the station. Well, that means you're going to have full-time employees who are sitting in the station, waiting for the alarm to go off. That goes to the breakdown, they're out the door in two minutes, they're on scene within four to five minutes later. If you want to improve your response time by a minute from what it was last month, that's what you'd have to do. If you're saying, we want maybe one fully-staffed ambulance, and do, you know, cross-train, or have firefighters who can jump on a secondary ambulance, or POCs, which are paid-on-call, people who, when a pager goes off, they're going to come from home, run down the station, jump in an ambulance and respond. That's basically the system we have right now. Once you determine what you want your response to be, and how many ambulances you want in town, that will tell you how to build your staffing accordingly.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, thanks.
I agree. I, I tried to go over that, I think, exhaustively, maybe repetitively, that response time and level of service are going to be the key goals in determining which route you take here. And, yeah, that's, that's important. I think we heard pretty consistently that you want an EMTA level. I don't think that, that response times were discussed too much, other than that we didn't want to be any worse than we currently are, and if we could get better, that would be a great option. So, I, I didn't see anything out of line with any of that conversation. I think the, the four options that I laid out will all provide some level of improvement on the existing service. I think that, that in the long run, the funding options are going to be coming, you know, how much full staff are you going to have all the time, where? And that then starts to drive, you know. If you're going to have six full-time EMTs and six full-time firefighters, or are you going to have six firefighter EMTs? EMTs and six full-time firefighters, or are you going to have six firefighter EMTs? Now, based on your equipment utilization, you could get away with the six at this point in time. Sometime in the future, you're going to have to go to six at some higher level anyways. But at this point in time, to be able to break into it and operate at a functional level, I don't think that that's where you have to go. But it's still a determination of what kind of goals do you want to set. And the response times and level of service are critical to that. And I don't think you can get away from that conversation.
Ms. Quidnow?
In looking at my notes from that meeting, what the resounding theme that was brought up was with regard to what things we need to be taking into consideration. It was the level of service and it was the cost. The amount of time discussed, you're right, Steve, was never really brought up by the townships around us. I think it was more of making sure that whatever services we are providing are going to be at least the same as what they are currently getting. Main concerns, of course, were the type of emergency happening out in farm areas and things like that. But the other thing to keep into consideration is, like you had mentioned, staffing. And I want to put this out there that it is not just some places that have a staffing problem. As Tom Murphy mentioned earlier today, he said that, you know, in 2013, they had 31, and now there are 19. And that is just continuing to steadily decline because there are more people retiring and we don't have a lot of replacements. Those things are also happening in other places with EMT. So, it's not just our little town. It's not, it's pretty much throughout the state. But I think what I'm hearing from the townships and what I'm hearing from constituents is the level of service and the cost is the most important thing. I know that time is something we need to think about, but apparently, it's not been such a problem that we need to make it a consideration.
All right. So, just to wrap up some of this a little bit, I know that we're still in some fact-finding as far as wanting to have a session with the county and understand that segment of it. We need to look at it from a community standpoint, not just the city's goals, but how the townships interact and be good community stewards and make sure that it's the right thing for the surrounding communities as well, even though our responsibilities are to the city. Hopefully, that'll go hand in hand, that if we offer a good service and the townships participate, it'll bring down the cost and help with that segment of it as well. We do need to put some other workshops together before our next meeting, of course. We'll see what we can do to put something like that together. So, I will sit down with staff and see what we can do as far as getting some things together and getting our different facts and figures all lined up so that it'll help with the presentation during that next meeting. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is item D, Resolution 22-31. Can we have a reading of that resolution?
Resolution 22-31, Authorization to Borrow Funds, TID Number Five.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
Just a point of clarification here. We have two resolutions. Are we supposed to address both tonight or pick one?
An amendment to the resolution that was prepared and presented in your last meeting is provided tonight, and it would be appropriate for you to consider that.
The Resolution 22-31A?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the one for $500,000?
Correct.
Okay. I move to approve Resolution 22-31A, Authorization to Borrow Funds, TID Number Five for $500,000.
Can I actually ask a question first? This is Misty. I'm sorry. This is currently tabled. I believe there has to be a motion second to take it off the table first.
Okay, then I motion to take Resolution 22-31E off the table and address it.
Second.
Thanks, Misty.
All right. So, there's a motion to take Resolution 22-31 off the table by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Ms. Curler. Discussion?
Can you remind me as to why we tabled this?
I made the motion because there was some discussion at the last meeting as to which TIDs this money was being borrowed for. And I wanted clarification and writing, solidifying that this is TID Five, or the question last night was also TID Eight, and it appears now TID Eight is no longer in consideration. And I wanted to know what percentage of the money was going to which entity under our developer agreements. And I think that that's properly laid out now in the motion, or the resolution before us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? So, roll call for the motion to take Resolution 22-31 off the table.
Ms. Quidnow?
Roll call, thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
All right. So, can we have a motion for one of these resolutions?
Well, since Motion 22-31 is now off the table, I think the appropriate route to go would be to amend that motion with 22-31A as presented.
Okay. And now I'm thinking about what I just did. I think I just removed 22-31A off the table, even though it wasn't tabled?
I think Misty corrected that, and that 22-31 is what actually came off the table. That's the way I understood it anyway. So, yeah.
Okay. So, we need to now, I will move to amend Resolution 22-31 with Resolution 22-31A as presented.
A second.
So, motion by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Ms. Quidnow to amend to Resolution 22-31A. Any discussion? What is the differences between the two?
So, I can address them just based on what I see, or if the city attorney wants to speak to it?
Maybe even the treasurer.
Or the treasurer.
In the first resolution, I did not explain to which developer's agreement or developer was receiving what funds. It was just a blanketed amount for TID Number Five. So, I was requested that, and it was mentioned that it was possibly TID Eight. TID Eight was not involved in this. So, I left it as TID Five, but I broke it out more specifically in the resolution that Topol's is receiving 300,000. I'm going to look at my sheets.
Informal.
Yes, Topol is receiving 300,000 and Formal is receiving 200,000 as their third and final draw for this resolution. And, Ms. Bishop, you did also ask if there was any other developer's agreements on the remaining, and there is one more remaining. It is TID Eight. It's Tyranina, and they will have one more draw from that TID next year.
That's downtown?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We've used unreserved fund balance to fund that, but eventually, we'll borrow the money probably next year as they finalize. That's probably more up to whoever comes in, but that's generally been the process. So...
All right. Any other questions?
I will note that the previous one was 508, and this one's 500. The budget was actually 508, but when we went through the numbers, the eight was to cover an item that we didn't need to cover because the TID's actually generating enough money. We didn't have to worry about it.
All right. Any other questions? CNN, let's have a roll call on Resolution 22-31A.
This is still the motion to amend?
Man, you're slowing up the meeting.
One step at a time. Constant progress, my man.
All right, to amend. The motion to amend, roll call, please.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion for Resolution 22-31-A?
I move to approve Resolution 22-31A as written. Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, a second by Mrs. Bishop. Any discussion? CNN, can we have a, go ahead?
Can I just make one statement? So, anybody who knows me or has watched previous meetings knows that I typically vote no on a lot of borrowing and that I voted no on the last bond resolution. I will vote yes for this because I do find that it meets our obligations with our developer agreements and that it is our last draw for these two developers. And so, I do find that I will be, well, I will be voting yes on this in addition to the fact that the percentage rate for the interest rate is low, and we know that they're going to be getting higher. So, it is a good time to go ahead and borrow this money. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
I guess I would just like to ask, when you bring these forward each time, Sam, are you looking at whether there are any other funding options available, you know, before borrowing each time we, even though maybe we planned to borrow it? Do you always kind of take a fresh look to see if that's necessary?
Yes. In fact, we tried to do it within the large borrowing that we just did for the general fund, but we weren't allowed to do it for the TIDs. So, I looked at local and got the best interest rate, which ended up being the Bank of Lake Mills this time.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? CNN, can we have a roll call?
Steve has something.
Do you have questions, Steve?
Nope.
The Steve?
The Steve?
I think, yeah. The reason we couldn't borrow the money with the other borrowing is because we didn't borrow any revenue bonds. We actually threw the one revenue bond, which was the water, into a general obligation. And these have, these are revenue bonds because they're being repaid. They're guaranteed by the developer to pay us back if there's no increment. So, we had to find a different method other than the regular revenue bond method. So, we had to opt going to local borrowing, but she does check all the options available to us.
All right. Anything else?
I did, just to let you know, I did check with the state treasury too, and theirs was much higher. So, it was the local and the state that I checked with, and theirs was higher than what was presented.
Great, thank you.
All right. I'm going to move to roll call on Resolution 22-31A.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. All right, item E, Resolution 22-33. Can we have a reading of that?
Resolution 22-33, Adjustments to Impact Fees.
All right. Can we have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 22-33, Adjustments to Impact Fees. Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Quidnow, a second by Ms. Curler. City staff?
This is the 23rd time I've done this. It's a requirement in the existing ordinance to increase the impact fees by the rate of inflation as set in the ordinance. So, it's been on the agenda every year.
Is there any questions?
Just one note. So, I was spot checking some of the numbers to make sure I understood them, and I went back to the city code online. And that is an old draft. The most recent impact fee resolution that was passed last year by this council has not yet been added to that. So, you have to go look for that document to then add the 3% to get to these numbers here. So, if anybody's looking in the code, those numbers are not going to line up based on what we're doing here in this resolution. But they do line up when I looked at them, based on last year's numbers.
So, to clarify, we're looking at a 3% Consumer Price Index increase here?
From what we passed last year in 2021, yes.
Correct. All right. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah. I got a question from the president of the Public Works Board asking about their broad authority as a public works board compared to this authority, which is in Chapter 411 of the Lake Mills Municipal Code. And I've talked to Dan about it. I just wanted, wondered if you could comment. It seems that this, Chapter 411 of the city code gives the council explicit authority to do this without having a public works board recommendation. And I just wanted to make sure that that's correct and so that we're not skipping over any requirement to have the public works board make a recommendation on this.
Yes, that is my understanding. In all of the categories of impact fees, our specific ordinance in Chapter 411 does dictate that by resolution, these are increased by the Consumer Price Index annually. So, there may be an avenue or a reason to take that step in the future and have them review it, but I believe that's a completely arbitrary step, that you have explicit authority as the council and are required to, under ordinance, make this annual adjustment. So, yes. I don't believe that you're skipping a necessary step in that process.
Okay, thanks.
It's been this way for 23 years, and I'm pretty sure it was that way the four years before I got here. Bet the council dealt with it, didn't go to public works board.
Any other questions? All right, CNN, let's move to a roll call on Resolution 22-33.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Steve, you're muted.
Mr. Fields?
I'm sorry, aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, item F is Resolution 22-34. Can you read the resolution, please?
City Council Resolution 22-34, Conditional Use Permit, Declarations and Findings.
All right. So, this is dealing with the laughing dogs situation. This is a permit, correct?
A conditional use permit.
Okay. Staff, or can we get a, can we get a motion on the resolution?
I move to adopt City Council Resolution 22-34, Conditional Use Permit, declarations and findings.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, a second by Ms. Curler. City staff comment?
Brian, go ahead.
Thanks, Steve. So, we did provide a memo for you regarding the conditional use permit. Just want to highlight a couple of things, first being that this is an amendment to an existing conditional use to add commercial animal boarding, basically overnight, overnight stays for dogs. In the memo, they do outline essentially all the operational conditions related to the business, as well as DACAB standards for care, which are incorporated into the recommendations of conditional approval. The business is compliant with these conditions currently, and those conditions being essentially, you know, maximum number of dogs that would be allowed to be boarded overnight would be 20, and then that only dogs would be permitted to be boarded. Again, following the DACAB standards for care for indoor enclosures, as well as the general standards, and then allow biannual review and inspection of the premises to make sure that, essentially, that those standards are being met. And then, if any questions, feel free.
And this was approved by the planning committee. And this was approved by the planning commission, correct? All right. It looks like that was their motion, 22-5-3. Any questions? All right, CNN, let's move to a roll call vote on Resolution 22-34.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, let's see, that's item G, Resolution 22-35. A lot of resolutions tonight. Can we have a reading of Resolution 22-35?
Resolution 22-35, policy revision regarding handbook and forms for annual evaluation of city manager job performance.
All right, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-35, policy revision regarding handbook and forms for annual evaluation of city manager job performance.
Second.
Was it you, Catherine? Yes. All right, so a motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. City staff comment?
I'm happy to, unless Ms. Curler would like to start.
Sure, I'll kick it off, and then, Dan, please add anything if I miss. I volunteered to put together an update for this handbook. We all had an experience with the handbook, using it last year, and felt that it might be good as a parallel to hiring a new city manager to update this. So as you see in the resolution, working with our HR Director and City Attorney, Dan Drescher, we tried to update the goals and expectations of the council, also increase the clarity, efficiency, and accountability in the process. So maybe I'll just highlight a few things, the documents that you have in addition to the resolution. One document that was colored in blue and yellow was just a simplified summary of just the questions for the performance form, review form. Those things that are in blue were in the current policy, the things that are in yellow were changed or added. So just for... To help you kind of look at those if you have any comments. There are 20 questions were retained and 21 were added. The main reasons for adding are to reflect the priorities that our council and staff contributed in thinking about hiring a new city manager. And so some of those feature, some of those things that we really wanted to emphasize were interpersonal skills like integrity, communication, and then professional skills like budgeting, planning, human resources. Those were some of the top ones. And so you'll see in the question categories of those, there's a fair amount of emphasis in those areas to kind of reflect that those are some of the priorities that we have as a community. The framework for all the questions is the International... I'm going to get the acronym wrong, City Managers Association organization, their best practices. And so they have an updated version since the last time we had this policy adopted in 2013, so we also tried to reflect that. In the handbook document itself, the... Tried to really consolidate and be concise about the process for the annual review and then check-in meetings in between. So the annual review occurs every year in November, and there's a series of steps in that process to go through. And then there are check-in meetings in between those annual reviews with the entire council and the city manager. And then there's the latitude for the council president to meet as needed in between all of those, one-on-one with the city manager. So the overall package is an updated handbook with an updated process, a new performance evaluation form, which is Appendix A, and then Appendix B, which is those ICMA practices. So, Dan, did I miss anything or anything else we should highlight?
You nailed it. I think that the work that went into this, Ms. Curler did an excellent job. It is definitely an improvement from the past iteration, which was adopted by Resolution 1301 by a previous council. I think this update is completely appropriate and look forward to utilizing it in the future. So, thank you.
And I'm welcome, just finally, I would add, I would encourage us to adopt this tonight, but I also welcome any comments. I know it's a lot to dig into, and I'm certainly welcome to welcome any input on edits or revisions to the questions. I think we have, you know, we have opportunity to make it better, so I'm all ears.
All right, any questions or comments?
Yes, can you... Excuse me, can you remind me the difference between the highlighted colors?
Yes. So the document that says questions only, that's again just for reference. So the blue, the text that's highlighted in blue are questions or text that's in our 2013 policy, our 2013 handbook. And then anything that's in yellow was added. So for example, question one, Foster's ethical behavior is in blue, that was the entire statement in the original, in the 2013 handbook. I felt that maybe elaborating on what that might look like would be good, so the rest of the sentence is in yellow because we've added some text. Some of the questions are all yellow, that means that's a completely new question.
And then once again, it bears being said that the questions were developed with the council directives and the staff comments in mind. So there may be latitude to change these if you want to review further and really get into this. I think it's definitely meatier. There's a lot to go through here on an annual basis, but I'm very comfortable that the issue areas and the kind of... The areas that the council expressed wanting to cover more are fairly represented here moving forward, so.
Any other questions or comment?
Ms. Curler, Mr. Drescher, thank you guys so much for putting this together. I don't envy anybody who started this project, but it's clear how much time and effort you guys put into it, and I'm reading through the questions and I'm thinking, yep, we've discussed this, yes, this is important to us. And it is meaty, as Mr. Drescher said, but it reflects considerations we've had, especially after going through one iteration of evaluating a city manager. You know, the prior questions sometimes didn't, I didn't feel like related to the job or concerns that we had, whereas these do. I think I'm comfortable with what you're presenting here today. I've had the opportunity to go through it. I don't know if anybody else wants more time. I would be okay also with more time, but I don't see a reason necessarily to push this off if we're all comfortable with the questions that are presented and how we would be doing evaluations in the future.
If I may, just one more second. I'm not trying to create pause here whatsoever. This is still, I don't know how to say it nicely, but like a fledgling council, you've been together for about a year and a half now. I think this is a really good step as to what your expectations are, clear communication as to what your expectations are with, you know, the most important employee of the city, the employee that you have direct jurisdiction over. So make this as comprehensive as you think is necessary, make it as collaborative or whatever adjective you want to use in describing the actual document, but make it an expression that is your own. I know how much work Ms. Curler put into it. I am definitely comfortable with the document, but I wouldn't hesitate from recommending that you do thoroughly review it and make sure that it covers all bases. If you are comfortable with it, I wouldn't hesitate to pass it tonight. Thank you.
I would also like to back up the comments from Mrs. Bishop, that I know it takes a lot of work to dig into this and do this, so I appreciate the work that you did, Mrs. Curler, Ms. Curler, and also Mr. Drescher. I know that you put in a lot of work into this as well. I'm completely comfortable with moving forward tonight. It is your motion, Ms. Curler, so you can deem if you want to move forward with a vote or not, but I'm comfortable moving forward.
Well, thank you all, and you know, I, like anything, I'm sure it's not perfect if we get an opportunity to, you know, put it into motion and use it. We may come up with other ideas for improvements. It's pretty robust, so I think we have high expectations for a future city manager, and no one person is going to, you know, exceed expectations in all of these measures, but I think it does... I hope that it communicates what we're looking for and what we want to see in our city manager.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Curler, are you okay with moving forward?
Yes, thanks.
I was going to say, thank you for doing... Apparently I have a frog in my throat. Thank you for doing this. I know, looking at, and when you explained the differences between the two different highlighted, that really helps make everything make more sense. And like Ms. Bishop mentioned, it's a lot more thorough and so much easier to evaluate based on this information than it was the first time we experienced it. So I really, really appreciate both of your time and efforts in getting this done, and I hope that it will make our job in the coming months and years, easier one, to help everyone do a better job.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Fields, you're an experienced manager, any comments?
No, he did a great job on it, so, yeah, just reading through all this, it's much easier to follow. Just to reiterate, I think it's going to make it easier for all of us in the future. Thank you.
All right, let's move forward, the roll call vote on Resolution 22-35.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next is Resolution 22-36. Can we have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution 22-36, authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 22-36, authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Second.
All right, Ms... Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. City staff comment?
This is an annual resolution that's required by the DNR. Basically, kind of scores the wastewater treatment plant over the last 12 months, actually for 21. And then if there's any upgrade requirements or actions that need to be taken, it's incorporated into the resolution. Our system received a very high grade and went well. So Paul, you have any comments?
Only that I'm supposed to keep it short, we had a good year.
Thanks, Paul.
Is that from me, or where did that come from?
Had to have been Misty or Dan.
From Dan, all right. Any other questions, comments?
3.9 out of a 4-point scale, so it's pretty good.
All right. Any other questions or comments? CNN, let's move forward with a roll call vote on Resolution 22-36.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields? Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 1234. Can we have a reading of that ordinance, please?
Ordinance 1234, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 018-0713-121214-002.
So this is the third reading of this ordinance? All right. So we would want a motion for the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1234, annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills.
I'll second.
So motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. City staff comment?
I do have a couple. We had a title issue running alongside this one in that the petition was identified as a future title holder. They have corrected that. I did look online today, that document has been recorded. I'm absolutely willing to rely on that, I've seen the deed. They have fixed the title issue, and it's appropriate to move forward in accordance with the petition that has been presented. However, we did receive some response back from the state in their initial review, and there is a couple of things that need to be addressed with the legal description and with the plat map that was provided with the application. So because this property is going to have another ordinance to address regarding a zoning change in the future, I think that will come forward in the meeting that you're holding in July. I would recommend tabling this at this time, just so we can gather more information to complete the annexation, and we know that the annexation is going to go through state review, county review, prior to taking that next step and actually changing the zoning as well. While that's not necessarily required at this time, I don't think that the petitioner necessarily loses anything by adopting this ordinance at the next meeting and then addressing zoning at that time as well. And it does give staff a little bit of time to respond to the recently received response from the state. So it's not ideal to request that this one be tabled, but it's going to be a very short-term period, and I believe that we'll be able to address the issues that the state has presented. And once again, I'm very confident that the other kind of outlying issue, the issue with title, has been resolved. So at this point, I'd probably request that this is actually tabled until the next meeting.
So, Dan, if we table, we'd be looking at the annexation and the zoning at the same meeting?
Yes, but it will be first reading of the zoning, and it will come after, on the agenda, the third reading of this. So I'd expect this document, this annexation, to actually be adopted, and there are no other issues. I believe that will get through the state issue, and that will be really, really confident and comfortable moving forward in that regard. And at that point, I'd be comfortable with the zoning ordinance coming forward immediately after.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Well, based on your recommendation, I guess I would amend my original motion and make a motion that we table ordinance 1234 until the next council meeting.
Second.
So motion to table to our next meeting by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any discussion? Or comment? CNN, let's move forward with a roll call on the tabling of ordinance 1234.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Excuse me, aye.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Fields?
You're still muted, Steve.
Aye.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you. So that has been tabled to our next meeting. Next on the agenda is ordinance 1235. Can we have a reading of that ordinance, please?
Ordinance 1235, amending city of Lake Mills ordinance, section 660-44, official zoning map, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 246-0714-1822-007. Owner, James W. Schmidt, 923 East Lake Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, and that's a second reading? So we have no need for a motion here at this point? Any comment or questions? CNN, we'll move on. The next meeting, we'll have the third reading for ordinance 1235. Next on the agenda is ordinance 1238. Can we have a reading of that ordinance, please? And this is the first reading of this ordinance? I know it's a nice, long one, so we'll bear with you, Lori. Thank you.
Ordinance 1238, amending city of Lake Mills ordinance, section 609, vehicles, all-terrain, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Whereas Wisconsin statute 23-33 grants broad authority to municipalities to designate highways and roads... to designate highways and roads with its jurisdiction as all-terrain vehicle, ATV, and utility terrain vehicle, UTV, routes open to ATVs and UTVs. Whereas Wisconsin statute section 893.80, pran 4 pran, limits liability of local governments for legislative decisions, meaning that opening routes and trails to ATV and UTV use does not increase potential liability to the city of Lake Mills for authorizing such ATV and UTV use in the city limits. Whereas the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources has set forth administrative rules in chapter NR 64, establishing the standards for the input—implementation of all-terrain vehicle program under Wisconsin statute section 23.33, which rules also apply to owners and operators of ATVs and UTVs on routes and trails. Whereas Jefferson County ordinance number 2021-01 designates all county highways within its jurisdiction as ATV, UTV routes, excepting those within a city with local jurisdictional responsibility for that segment of the route unless the city has adopted an ordinance establishing such segment as an ATV, UTV route. Whereas in 2018 and 2019, the jurisdictions surrounding the city of Lake Mills, including the town of Lake Mills, the township of Milford, the city of Waterloo, and the township of Waterloo, all passed ordinances creating ATV and UTV routes in their respective jurisdictions. Whereas due to the city of Lake Mills not having an ordinance authorizing the use of ATVs and UTVs within the city limits, ATV and UTV riders located in the city must transport their vehicle outside of the city to use it, and ATV and UTV riders from surrounding jurisdictions must travel around the outside of the boundaries of the city of Lake Mills and cannot come in to the city limits to visit or do business here. And whereas pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 23.33, to designate highways and roads as ATV slash UTV routes and trails, the city council of Lake Mills must pass an ordinance authorizing establishing the routes and trails in such use and send a copy of the adopted ordinance to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, Wisconsin State Patrol, and the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hereby amend chapter 609, vehicles, all-terrain, and does ordain as follows. Section 1, city of Lake Mills ordinance, chapter 609, vehicles, all-terrain, is hereby amended as follows by adding section 609-4, route designation pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 23.33, pran 8 pran, pran B pran, pran 2 pran, and Jefferson County ordinance number 2021-01. The following highways and roads are hereby designated as ATV and UTV routes, all official city roads and county highway segments within the jurisdiction of the city of Lake Mills, so long as the road is signed in accordance with Wis—the Wisconsin statutes. Section 609-5, route signs. All ATV, UTV routes are to be signed pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 23.33, pran A pran, pran E pran, 3 and 4. All ATV, UTV routes shall be marked with Uniform ATV and UTV routes signs in accordance with NR 64.12 pran 7 pran, Wisconsin Administrative Code. Wisconsin—or pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 23.33, pran A pran, pran F pran, no person may do any of the following in regards to signs marking city ATV, UTV routes. Intentionally remove damage, deface, move, or obstruct any ATV or UTV route or trail sign if the sign is legally placed by the state or any municipal or local government or—or duly authorized personal—personnel of such state and local or municipal governments. Two, possess any Uniform ATV or UTV route or trail sign or standard of the type established by the department for the warning, instruction, or information of the public unless said person obtained the Uniform ATV or UTV route or trail sign of standard in a lawful manner. Possession of an ATV or UTV route or trail sign or standard creates a rebuttable presumption of illegal possession. Section 609-6, operation A, operation of ATVs, UTVs pursuant to this chapter shall be in accordance with all municipal, county, state, federal laws and regulations. Person B, persons operating an ATV or UTV on an ATV route within the city of Lake Mills pursuant to this chapter must be at least 16 years of age and hold a valid driver's license. A probationary license is acceptable for the purposes of this section. Section 609-7, enforcements and penalties. A, pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 23.33, pran 12 pran, this ordinance shall be enforced by any law enforcement officer authorized to enforce the laws of the city of Lake Mills. B, the penalties for violating provisions of this chapter are set forth in Wisconsin statute section 23.33, pran 13 pran, pran A pran, and are incorporated herein by reference. Section 609-8, agricultural use. ATVs and UTVs legally registered for private agricultural use are exempt from this ordinance. B, ATVs and UTVs legally registered for private agricultural use are subject to the laws and regulations of the Wisconsin statute, chapter 23.33 and 23.335, and Wisconsin Administrative Code NR 64 and NR 65. Section 609-9, cost. A, the cost of the ATV, UTV route signs, installation and maintenance will be paid for by Quad County Runners Incorporated or any successor organization or group. Within 30 days of the passage of this ordinance, Quad County Runners Incorporated will coordinate with the Director of Public Works of the city of Lake Mills to determine the location of the ATV, UTV route signs to be installed at all designated points as required by this chapter and any applicable county or state laws and regulations. B, Quad County Runners Incorporated will be responsible for the installation of the ATV and UTV route signs in accordance with the provisions of this chapter. C, ATV, UTV route signs shall be dedicated to the city of Lake Mills and become the property of the city of Lake Mills upon installation. D, the city of Lake Mills reserves the right to send an invoice to Quad County Runners Incorporated or its successor organization for reimbursement of costs to the city for any ATV and UTV route sign replacement or maintenance. Section 2, ordinance—ordinance language to be repealed is bracketed and stricken. Ordinance language to be added is underlined. When revising, by approving the ordinance, they're inclusive in the city code, the brackets, the material that has been bracketed and stricken, and the underlining need not to be included. Section C, adoption of this ordinance amendment must have been sponsored—amendment has been sponsored by city council representative Catherine Bishop and Steve Fields. Section 4, all ordinance are parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, upon passage of this ordinance by the city council, the city clerk shall forward copies to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, Wisconsin State Patrol, and the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. Section 6, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Thank you, Lori. All right, that was the first reading. Um, Mr. Fields or Ms. Bishop? Do—you—Mrs. Bishop, do you have any comments on this?
I do, and I'm happy to go. Steve, did you want to go first at all? Seeing nothing from Mr. Fields currently. Okay.
He just got kicked off Zoom.
Oh. Do we—
Why don't you go ahead and proceed while he's getting back on?
Okay, so, I'll go ahead and introduce this legislation. Um, since it's the first reading, I'll address where the city code currently stands, the issues—do we have Mr. Fields back?
Yep.
Okay, it looks like we do. Um, the issues that city residents, um, currently face that brought me to sponsor this ordinance. Uh, secondly, I'll cover the legal basis for this ordinance, and then third, uh, what this ordinance as written will hopefully achieve. So, first off, the city code does have a section for all-terrain vehicles. It's in section 609, and it has three very small paragraphs. Um, it defines all-terrain vehicles by incorporating the Wisconsin statutes. It adopts by reference the current state statute on ATVs, um, and then it provides for enforcement and penalties. So, um, with the adoption of the state statutes, this was done back in 2009, but the following step was for the city to designate routes and trails, and that's the step I'm hoping to do in this piece of legislation. It's the final step that would allow ATVs and UTVs to be ridden in the city jurisdiction. And so, the issues that we currently have, I've brought about in some of the whereases, and you'll note that currently, if ATV riders can't ride in the city, they have to trailer their vehicle outside of the city to then go ride our surrounding routes and trails. So, that's the first issue that came to my attention. Um, secondly, with that, and you'll see in one of the whereases, I've listed the jurisdictions that, um, do allow ATVs, and you also have a chart outlining those jurisdictions. Um, you can see that nobody can come into the city to do business either. Uh, so they have to ride outside around the city limits. They can't cut through. It, um, it also means they can't get gas, for instance, at the four corners. Um, so it just creates an impediment to bringing people into the city, doing business here, interacting here. So, um, that's at least one policy reason to consider this, and this ordinance would address that issue. Um, next, you'll see the legal bases for these ord—this ordinance laid out in all of the whereases, and they are lengthy, and I do apologize for that, especially to Lori and her patience in reading this. Um, but I felt like it was important for everybody coming into this issue, sort of at a first glance, to see what authority we had from the state to implement an ordinance like this and to allow ATV and UTV riders in our city. Um, I also wanted to lay out, you know, the extensive legislation and administrative codes that exist that govern our riders. Um, and I'll come back to that in a minute as to why I didn't reincorporate all of that into our own city code. Um, and if you—if you happen to look at the Wisconsin statutes, they have very specific requirements, definitions of what ATVs, UTVs are, um, that they generally cannot be modified, right? And so, um, there are limits and restrictions, and a lot of that is safety-related as well. Um, so those are the legal bases, as well as citing the Jefferson County ordinance, um, that does allow for, uh, all county highways in its jurisdiction to be ATV, UTV routes, and, uh, I think—oh, it covers the next step. So, what happens once this ordinance is passed? Well, it has to go—the copy of the ordinance has to be sent to DNR, has to be sent to State Patrol so that everybody is on the same page. And also, that aids in the, um, the drawing of the state maps that go on the DNR website, so that riders know where they can and can't ride and have a central resource for that. Let me pull my notes back up here. So, that's the first set of issues. The second set, I covered that with the whereas statements and the next steps. So, third is what this ordinance actually does. And in the very first section, 609-4, route designation, it's saying all official city roads and county highway segments in our jurisdiction will be ATV, UTV routes. And that really addresses the central issue of, uh, why this was brought to me, that people can't ride in the city, that they have to go around the city, and all of those other things. Um, so this section solves that issue. Next, um, the ordinance itself, for being three pages, may actually seem lean based on all of the policy considerations and questions and safety concerns that people have that have already been started to be brought up to, um, myself as a council member, and I'm sure my colleagues here. Um, and what I started to allude to earlier is that's on purpose, because the state statutes and the state regulations that govern all ATV riders, including those in our city, are so robust. And so, I encourage people to look at those when they're considering this ordinance, and, um, I'm totally open to discussion on those other points when we get to debating this at the third reading. So, um—
Yeah. One of the council meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I'm good to keep going. Um, that's the first thing that this ordinance does. And then, um, a couple additional points to that. I didn't rewrite every single thing or incorporate every rule like a time limit, because I felt like that would create a patchwork of rules in the surrounding organization or, um, surrounding municipalities that would then maybe catch or trap a rider where they're riding legally in one place at one point in time, and they literally cross the jurisdictional line to go back to maybe where they live, and now they're out of bounds in terms of acting illegally. So, um, to the extent that we start modifying this, I want to be very careful. If anybody had a motion, that we try to be in line with at least the county and our surrounding ordinances to make sure that we're not creating that patchwork of rules and that people can ride with certainty of, you know, whether they're in or out of bounds acting appropriately or not. Um, I do have to address that there was a fatal accident in Waterloo a couple of weeks ago, and I think at least a couple of my council members are aware of that. If they're not, now you are. Um, the final report is not out yet that I have seen. The identifiable details are that the riders were, um, young—I want to say 13 or 14, at least under the age of 16, uh, so therefore did not possess driver's licenses, and they were also on a state highway, I believe. And so, what I've done in section 609-6, subparagraph B, is we've actually created a restriction that is more strict than the Wisconsin statutes and more strict than the administrative rules. And that would require a rider to be 16 years of age possessing a valid driver's license, which would be on top of the requirement from the Administrative Code that a rider also possess a safety certificate in the operation of UTV. So, it's an additional step that I feel like will aid in the security and safety of the riders in our city. So, I did want to point out that section specifically and try to address some of those concerns right off the bat. Um, so that's what I have. That's what this ordinance does. We've addressed costs. We've addressed some agricultural use issues that are also specifically exempt in the Wisconsin statutes. It's usually for use on private property or very specific purposes that I didn't feel like, uh, came into play on our city roads. So, again, given this is the first reading, that's my introduction. I welcome anything else Mr. Fields has to say, and then I'll, uh, wait on the other issues that I'm sure will be brought up or questioned and discuss those, uh, be prepared to discuss those at the third reading in our—in our discussion about that.
Before we get to, uh, questions and comments, Mr. Fields, did you have anything to add?
Um, no, Mrs. Bishop did a great job. I just, um, on my part of it, I did meet with the police chief, uh, Chief Slick, and also the interim chief in the, uh, Tunnel Lake Mills, got their input. Um, one of their feedback was the driver's license issue to make sure we acquired that, which, uh, Mrs. Bishop did. Did a great job. We tried to address any of their issues for the most part. Um, they iterated that surrounding communities were very tentative or concerned on the—from the police end. And then after implementing the UTV, ATVs to their streets or, um, ATV roads to this towns and cities, they said it's pretty much been a non-issue. It's been very, um, very low impact on them, so they—they were not at all against this. Actually, they were for this. And I've had several constituents contact me and said it'd be great if—especially with the gas prices, if they could bring their UTVs into work, because they do get much better gas mileage in their pickup trucks. So, um, hopefully this is a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
All right, so we'll open it up to questions and comments at this point. Uh, I got a quick question. On the ag use, how does that relate to the city of Lake Mills on the operational license side of things? Does that mean if—if it's an agricultural use product, that means they can enter the town without an operations license, or enter the city without an operations license? Excuse me.
I think—I—I'm not sure about the operations license aspect on it. They could certainly use, um, ATV for agriculture or recreational pro—purposes on private property without any certifications or anything like that first. I think it's more regarding, um, use for agricultural purposes absent route designation. So, they can—you—they could drive, uh, on a non-route right-of-way, um, for agricultural purposes from one farm field to another farm field, for instance, or for snow removal, for instance, different purposes that are exempt under the, uh, Wisconsin statutes.
Right, and I didn't call out every exempt purpose, like Mr. Drescher just stated, for snow plows, for instance, or for instance, municipalities can have—I believe have their workers use UTVs, um, even without this piece of legislation. So, I didn't call out all of those things. Agricultural purpose is defined in the Wisconsin statutes to include a purpose related to the transportation of farm implements, equipment, supplies, or products on a farm or between farms. And as Mr. Drescher also said, typically that would be on private property.
Is there other questions or comments? Yes.
Um, thank you for, um, bringing this forward, Catherine and Steve.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Catherine and Steve. I appreciate you mentioning the recent UTV fatality. I was coming home from an appointment in Waterloo that day, driving down 89, and, you know, had to stop and be diverted around all the emergency vehicles, and later learned that a 14-year-old lost her life in that UTV accident. So that is still very upsetting to me, and I believe that we should be very deliberative in considering this, and also that we are very thorough in seeking resident and business input to evaluate whether, whether this is the right thing for our community. You know, maybe that the communities surrounding us have decided that that's the right thing for them. We have our own, you know, opportunity to make up our own decision about that. One of the things that I guess I'm, I'm wondering about, or I'm, I'm thinking about is, you know, this use of ATVs and UTVs on city streets wasn't contemplated in our current comprehensive plan, and we're currently going through an update in that comprehensive plan. This hasn't been reviewed by any of our boards or committees, which is something that we as a council said that we really want to try to do, is get, you know, a thorough review and input from our boards. And so I, you know, for all those reasons, I feel that this is maybe premature to be bringing this forward without having any board input or have, have this evaluated through and get public comment through the comprehensive planning process.
So, so currently at the Public Works Board, there is a review being done on, on bike lanes that we were looking at, how do we make the east side of town more accessible so that the, the growing population on the east side of town from Brookstone can actually get to the downtown area as safely as possible? And it's something that's being reviewed by the Public Works Board. Does it make sense to, to roll in some, some additional things into this comprehensive review that would maybe include, besides the bicycle lanes, maybe include ATV, UTV, recreation vehicles, golf carts? I know golf carts is a big issue on the south side of town. I'm, I'm a new resident down there, and, and I see golf carts regularly on, on the streets and sidewalks. So maybe that review that's being done should be a little bit more comprehensive and, and look at this issue as well, because I know from an infrastructure standpoint, we have these city streets that, that get a certain amount of traffic, and now we're looking at, you know, throwing additional traffic on with UTVs and with the, the other recreational type vehicles, and it might make sense just to have the board take a look at that as part of their plan. So I, I am in, in agreement with that, with that thought process.
So I happened to see in one of the attachments that was provided that there is only about three communities, cities, I should be specific, three cities in our area that currently have an ordinance with regard to ATV and UTVs. So I pulled up the ordinance that is in Juneau, and it may be worthwhile for us to take a look at that particular one because their, their wording is a lot more specific and would be, I would say, maybe more protecting of city. I, I realize that you've put in that the city would not be held liable, but it, it is worthwhile to take a look and see what that, what else there might be that maybe we didn't think about, kind of along those lines, like what, what Greg was saying, what the snowmobiles is, is mentioned in here as well, lawn mowers, maintenance vehicles and the such. So that it's very specific as to what type of vehicle. I know the ATVs and UTVs are very, they have a specific range. I had a couple of high schoolers give me some very informative presentations on the two things, so I'm a lot more familiar with them than I was about three months ago. But there are a lot of concerns that I would have is with regard to, you know, in roadways, when, when, when people are in certain capacities, are they allowed to pass? Should they consider an ATV, UTV like a car on the road? How does this, you know, how does that work?
To your last sentence, so this goes back to the Wisconsin statutes and DNR, the administrative code that's being brought into our ordinance. ATVs are treated just like regular traffic. They have to follow all of the rules of the road, just like a normal vehicle using the road. And so to go to your point and then Mr. Waters' point about, should we be more comprehensive and talk about other electric vehicles or?
Motorized vehicles.
Golf carts, motorized vehicles. I mean, you can literally run the gamut of, is a motorized skateboard something, is a motorized scooter that's on a moped, something, right? You can write a rule for everything, and I was trying to keep this as discreet to the issues at hand as possible, because you can write an ordinance that is, you know, 300 pages, and I don't think that does anybody any good. Specifically to the electric vehicles, there is another code section that is NEV.
Neighborhood electric vehicles.
That one, and I don't even think that addresses golf carts. I think that's something different.
It is something different. Golf carts have two specific cutouts in the city of Lake Mills, that being the area around the golf course and Sandy Beach Road and the Mobile Home Parks down there. Neighborhood electric vehicles are basically allowed throughout the city on surface roads. I believe there's a designated area that they're not, and I think that stops at Pine Street, and they're not allowed on roads that go over 30 miles per hour, over 35. So, but yeah, otherwise they're in the right-of-ways as well.
So to the extent that we're talking about other vehicle types, my point of view on that is that we should put them in the code sections where they should go, where they match, and not shove them into the UTV or ATV code section. I think that would lend a great deal toward just ease of reading, ease of understanding the laws in our city. So I, you know, if we're going to address golf carts, I'm okay with that, doing it as a separate ordinance. In regard to the Public Works Board issue, I, I see this ordinance as being squarely within the authority of the City Council to consider of its own accord. The Parks Board specifically is set up and referenced in the Wisconsin statutes that the duties of the Parks Board are to superintend and oversee really the construction of the roads, not necessarily how they're used. And I think how they're used, knowing that UTVs are part of the traffic of the road with the main vehicles and not a bike lane or something separate that could be added. I think it's squarely within our jurisdiction here as the council to consider it without having to send it back to a separate board or for later consideration as part of different plans. So that's where I stand on those issues as they've been brought up currently.
Any other comments or questions?
I don't think there's any doubt that the council can act on this without a recommendation from any of our citizen boards. I personally don't think that's wise, and I don't think that it's consistent with what we've talked about in strategic planning and other meetings where this council wants to have more citizen engagement, wants to have more citizen involvement, and be thorough in our evaluations. And so I, I, I think it would be appropriate to refer this to the Public Works Board for their evaluation. It might get a bit muddled and a little bit of scope creep if we try to throw in all the vehicles, but given that this ordinance has been introduced, I think it's, it's reasonable to ask a, a citizen board to take a look at it and evaluate, you know, the traffic considerations, safety considerations. We have law enforcement recommendations already, so we don't need them to look at that, but I, I do think it's reasonable to ask them to look at the things that are under their general purview.
I will concur with you on that, and having sat on the Parks Board for a year, I can say that I'm pretty certain that the Parks Board folks would have some things to add to this as far as, you know, what they know about the, the roadways and, and how it may or may not impact the, the nature around us.
I think this is more fitting for Public Works than for Parks.
It is, I agree, in that it would impact, but I think it's also worth mentioning that Parks Board people may like.
So one of my concerns about going to Public Works is to prolong the process too long. We would need to, to work with them to find a way to maybe have more than one meeting a month for Public Works until we, we get this hammered out so that we can move forward quicker. You know, this, this suggestion I'm, I'm about to make doesn't have any bearing on, on my opinion of this, of this issue. It's just that I think it needs to go through further review. The comments that I, I, I got on this issue, some of them were in favor, some of them were against, but I had more that were actually asking for this review process to be, to allow the community to have feedback. And I know several people left tonight because the meeting got long, and, and hopefully we'll get public feedback in the future. But my suggestion and the motion I'd like to make is to delay the second reading of the ordinance 1238 until the Public Works Board has a chance to review and make recommendations to City Council.
I'll second.
So motion by Mr. Waters to table, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any discussion or comment?
Based on my previous comments, I'm going to vote no on this. I do believe that there's still plenty of avenue for public comment. I think some of the councils already received that, although, Mr. Waters, I know you received one, it sounds like, to get board approval or not approval.
Not approval.
Comments, recommendations. And so I recognize that your correspondence was different than mine, but I still feel, even voting no on this, that there's plenty of avenue for public comment. So I'm not trying to dissuade anybody from saying what they want to about it or from giving that input.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we will move to a roll call on the tabling of ordinance 1238 for the second reading, excuse me.
And your motion also includes sending it to Public Works Board for recommendation?
Correct.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-5.
3-2.
3-2.
Oh, I'm sorry, 3-2. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, that, that wraps up our City Council business for the night. Next on the agenda is recommendations for future agendas. Any recommendations?
I have one.
Yes.
Part of my duties as the vice president of the council are to make sure that we're on track with our strategic planning, which means that we should probably adopt the strategic plan that we've been working on with a consultant. So I'd like to propose that I could contact Erin, work with Erin and Steve to just bring this forward to the next meeting. That will also give, I think a few of us have maybe heard from some citizens, you know, that they want to know what we came up with and have some input in that, and so that would also allow public involvement in our strategic plan.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
You have a meeting tomorrow night?
Yeah. We do have a meeting tomorrow night, yep. Is that 5:30?
5:30.
5:30. And, and that's to work on a replacement for Mr. Wilkie. Try to get it down to four, is that what you're saying?
Four meetings left.
You have four meetings left.
He's not counting.
I thought you were trying to get the candidates down to four.
He's not, he's not.
You're not counting or anything, right.
And just to clarify, we are not meeting on July 5th, is that correct? Okay. But we may have a work session on EMS or something coming up, but we'll wait to hear on that.
So part of the city manager replacement, we are, we are looking at reviewing the candidates tomorrow, trying to whittle that down to a smaller unit, and then they will be coming to town for interviews in the first of July time period, and we hope to get community feedback, some open sessions with the community involved. So there'll be more information on that. We'll be setting that up in, in this meeting tomorrow, and there'll be information that'll be posted, and hopefully people from the community can be involved and, and help us with some feedback in, in that process. So I appreciate that. Any other thoughts or comments? All right, seeing none, the meeting stands adjourned at 9:45. Thank you.
Thank you.